Mount Pleasant City Commission, Tuesday, June 10th, 2024, at 7:00 PM. Please raise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as its own.
The Mount Pleasant City Commission recognizes the Anishinaabe whose ancestral lands the city stands upon today. We acknowledge the Saginaw-Chippewa Indian Tribe and recognize the three bands of Ojibwe, Saginaw, Black River, and Swan Creek have resided on this land for over 200 years. Our acknowledgement of the full history of the tribe and our commitment to be good stewards of these ancestral lands are an expression of gratitude and appreciation to those ancestors who came before us. We give thanks to the generous care with which the Anishinaabe and those members of the Saginaw-Chippewa Indian Tribe of Michigan have given and continue to give to this land and our community. Clerk, please take the roll.
Commissioner Bush?
Here.
Commissioner Chapman?
Here.
Commissioner Ake?
Here.
Commissioner Rollins?
Here.
Commissioner Wingard?
Here.
Vice Mayor Alsager?
Here.
Mayor Perschbacher?
Here.
We have a quorum.
We have a quorum, so we will continue. We're going to move into proclamations and presentations. We have an introduction of the new Peak Office Professional.
So I am pleased to announce our new employee for the Recreation Department, Anne Parks. She does a little bit of everything, but her main function is operating the Peak Program with Mary. Our new employee comes to us most recently from Farwell Middle School where she was a Title I ParaPro, and prior to that she was a records tech for Adams County in Colorado. In her spare time, Kimberly enjoys spending time with her boyfriend, dogs, cats, goats, and a llama. Please join me in welcoming Kimberly to our city staff.
Welcome, welcome. And now we have an introduction of our data analysis interns.
Good evening, everyone. I have the distinct pleasure of introducing our two data analyst interns. First, I'll start with Alexis Reed. Alexis is currently pursuing a bachelor's in psychology with a concentration business at Central Michigan University. Her analytical skills and understanding of human behavior combined with her business knowledge will bring a unique perspective to our data analysis projects. Also, we have with us Austin Benchley. He is also a student at Central Michigan University, working towards a bachelor's in business administration. With a solid foundation in business principles and a keen interest in data analytics, Austin is well-equipped to contribute to our efforts in analyzing and interpreting data to support our community's business initiatives. Both Alexis and Austin will be utilizing the Placer AI software to extract meaningful insights from the data and develop comprehensive reports to aid in our decision-making process. We're thrilled to have them on board, and we look forward to their contributions.
Thank you.
You're welcome. At this time, I'll read the proclamation for Juneteenth. Whereas Juneteenth, or Juneteenth Independence Day commemorates the traditional observance of the end of slavery in the United States and is observed annually on June 19th. And whereas President Abraham Lincoln signed the Emancipation Proclamation on January 1st, 1863, declaring the slaves in the Confederate Territory free, paving the way for the passing of the 13th Amendment, which formally abolished slavery in the United States of America. And whereas, more than two years would pass before the news reached Texas, when on June 19th, 1865, Union Major General Gordon Granger and his regiment arrived in Gavelston and spread the word that slavery had been abolished. And whereas, the following year, the first official Juneteenth celebrations took place in Texas and have continued across the United States throughout the years. And whereas, June 19th has a special meaning and is called Juneteenth, combining the words June and 19th, and has been celebrated by African-American community for over 150 years. And whereas, the city of Mount Pleasant supports our nation's Declaration of Independence, which provides that all men are created equal, and acknowledges that we should celebrate and enjoy liberty and justice for every citizen. Now therefore, I, Amy Perschbacher, Mayor of the City of Mount Pleasant, do hereby proclaim at June 19th, 2024, as Juneteenth Celebration Day in the Mount Pleasant, and further resolve to support the education and informational outreach by Central Michigan University on June 19th to involve our larger community in this celebration. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand in the great seal of the City of Mount Pleasant, Michigan, this 10th day of June 2024.
At this time, I'll ask the commission if there are any additions or deletions to the agenda. Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to accept the agenda as presented.
I move that we accept the agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
All those opposed? Nay. Motion carries. At this time, we move into the public input on agenda items. This is where you can come to the podium. You will be asked to state your name and address, and you'll be given five minutes. If you're joining us by Zoom, you can use the raised hand feature, or star nine if you're joining Zoom by phone. You'll be asked to state your name and give your address, and you'll be given five minutes. Is there anyone on Zoom tonight?
No reason.
Are there any emails?
You have all types up to ask.
Thank you. I see somebody standing in the wings there. Come on forward.
Hello, my name is Joseph Keryon. I live on 109 North Arnold. I just want to speak on the Passenger Rail Service Advisory Committee. As one of the few people probably here that lives completely car-free, I am 1,000% hoping this gets approved today. And as a lot of you know, I do come to these meetings a lot. I did do the Citizens Academy. I have been looking for a spot to try to get my first steps in here. And I don't know if this committee is open to positions for people that are not staff, because I saw that the committee members today being approved are only staff. But in the future, I think that's kind of my bread and butter, and I would like to maybe go for a position in that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak at this time? All right, we'll move on to receipts of petitions and communications. Manager DeSantis?
Received petitions and communications this evening includes the monthly report on police-related citizen complaints received.
All right, we're going to move on to consent items. Are there any consent items that the commission would like moved off the consent calendar and placed in the regular agenda? Seeing none, we'll move forward.
Consent items this evening includes approval of the minutes from the regular meeting held May 28, 2024, consider the establishment of a rail service advisory committee, consider resolution to dissolve the Mid-Michigan Aquatic Recreation Authority, consider approval of a contract with Yo and Yo for 2024 SAN and host replacement project for $51,489, consider approval of the proposed 2025-2030 capital improvement plan, and consider approval of payrolls and warrants.
I'll entertain a motion to accept the consent items as presented.
I move that we accept the consent items as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. It's a pro call. No. I'm just off my game. Okay. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
All those opposed? No. Motion carries. We have no public hearings and no new business. So we're going to move on to announcements on city-related items and new business. This is where the commission gets to bring forward anything that they would like the community to know or would like to address the staff. Does anybody have anything out there right now that they'd like to put forward? Yes?
Besides reminding people about the Juneteenth event coming up?
Put your microphone down.
Microphone down. I should just swallow the microphone, and I won't have to think about it. All right, so the CMU and the community will be celebrating or commemorating Juneteenth. You know, Mayor Perschbacher has read the proclamation. We hope we understand what Juneteenth stands for, and we also hope that the community will come out to support that. At Island Park. Go ahead, you can go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to add on to that. There will be an event taking place from 4:00 PM to 8:00 PM at Island Park, celebrating the event.
And June 19th?
Yes.
And there are two events prior to that. I think there's like a lunch and learn or something like that, and then a documentary that they're going to present on campus.
I think.
Yeah. Are there any other announcements?
I just wanted to comment on the Rail Service Advisory Committee. I know in the future we'll be looking for citizen participation on that as it moves forward. At the moment, it's just staff, but I'm very excited for that step to be taken. I think, and I've said this before, I think that rail line would profoundly change and improve our community. We'd be the center of not just major highway going north-south, but also rail line. We'd be at the center of it. And I think there's a lot of, in other communities, especially the southeast part of the state, it's looked at as like a vacation rail line for people who want to escape, go up north and everything. But it would have a profound impact on the populations and people and communities here in our area, because it would just open up that resource and give us the opportunity to travel between communities without a car, without needing to invest $20,000 and $300 a month to pay for that car every month if you're just traveling between communities. So I think it's a great direction for our state, and I'm excited to see that development.
Okay, so since Commissioner, friend here, has decided to preempt my piece, I'm just going to add to what he's saying, because we've talked about this for quite some time. We did approach a couple of politicians in Lansing this spring and talked about this. So yes, it is important. If we are thinking in terms of sustainability, economic sustainability, and also growth in our community, this is needed. It is needed resource, not just simply for people who are here permanently, but also for our students. A lot of our students don't have transportation, at least, and many of them, because they don't have transportation, do not know what cities, you know, up north or on the south look like. They just simply come and they stay. And I say this particularly because of the international students who often, you know, come here and they study and sometimes just leave. So there is, you know, I hope that the community will support this, and I hope that we work towards making this, you know, a reality, because it will open our community to a whole lot of things. But it also will give us the level of, I want to say, economic power that, you know, some of the cities south of us have that we don't ordinarily or we don't necessarily have, because we don't have huge industries here.
Okay, anyone else? All right, this time I'm going to open public comment on agenda and non-agenda items. If there's anyone that wishes to come forward and speak on something, they can step up to the podium. They'll be asked their name and address, and they'll be given five minutes. If you are joining us by Zoom, you may use the raised hand feature or star nine if you're joining Zoom by phone. You'll be asked to state your name and address, and you'll be given five minutes. Is there anyone on Zoom?
No reason.
Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak at this time? Seeing no one, I am going to close the public comment. And if nobody has opposed, we're going to move right into our work session. Now, when we have our work session, I want to remind the individuals in the audience that this is a work session among the commission, and there is no public comment during this time.
Right, good evening, City Commission. So tonight, I want to talk about our utility billing policy. In particular, I want to talk about the current ordinance that sets up the city policy related to water shut-off. I want to talk about an issuer scenario that had come up over the past, it's come up twice now in the past six months, talk about a problem statement based on that issuer scenario, talk about some possible solutions or considerations to it, answer any questions that the city commission may have, and then get some direction from the city commission regarding that. So our current ordinance sets up the city's policy on how the discontinuance of service happens. Essentially, after someone has billed for water and sewer, they have 45 days to pay, and if it goes beyond 45 days, then you get several notices along the way. After your first month, you get a notice, you do get door tags. So there are several notices that happen before eventually a water shut-off occurs. The idea is then that the water stays shut off until the individual pays their water bill, and then he fees, penalties, anything like that, at which time then the water service is turned back on. at which time then the water service is turned back on. So this has been our policy for quite some time now. A few things I want to highlight on this. One is the affordability of rates. We review our rates annually along with our annual budget. And we look at those, and in particular, everything that we've read in terms of federal poverty guidelines state that the water sewer bill ought to be less than 3% of the federal poverty income levels. And in any instance, no matter family size related to those federal poverty income levels, our bills fall below the 3%. We also like to remind folks that there is assistance available from the state of Michigan, A-CAP, and local charitable organizations. All that to say, I want to make sure that it's understood that we believe that this is more of a management and behavior issue more than it is a particular issue with regard to rates here in Mount Pleasant. So the issue in particular that we're talking about is that you have several large apartment complexes within the city that are owned by a management firm, and they require the tenant to pay for their utilities as part of the rent. The tenant hands over the month's rent. The management company then takes their money for the rent and applies that to their operations. And money for utilities is then paid to the city as well as any other utility provider as well. On two occasions, a management company that owns several of these large complexes has failed to pay the delinquent utility bills by the shut-off date. I can tell you that this is quite rare. This hasn't really happened much within the city of Mount Pleasant's history, and certainly not within my history in managing other communities as well. In these large apartment complexes, they often have a single point of shut-off. And so if the city were to utilize this single point of shut-off, it would require then that every tenant within those facilities gets shut off. Obviously, that could bring about a number of different problems. In this scenario, we will look at this. The non-payment issue is not necessarily the failure of the renters or the city residents. In this issue, it is a non-payment, which is the failure of the management company who is responsible for taking the rent from the tenants and then paying the city for water bills. So the problem statement is this. The current utility billing ordinance works well in most cases. However, the highlighted scenario and the execution of shut-offs would be problematic in displacing large amounts of people when they really have done nothing wrong from our means or from our understanding. Large apartment complexes, which we determine as 20 or more units where a management company pays the utility, should have a policy that prevents mass water shut-offs where the tenants are not responsible, while holding the management companies responsible for poor performance. In this particular issue, one of the complicating factors is just the size of these units. We would be talking about hundreds of people who, again, paid rent on time, did everything that they were supposed to do, and could be potentially negatively impacted should we move forward with water shut-offs. Meanwhile, it doesn't do that much to address the management company, which is delinquent on their utility bills. So staff had talked about a number of different solutions. We talked internally. We also talked with the city's legal representative as well, too, and came up with a few things to discuss with the city commission. One, the city could look at an increase in its late fees for non-payment. Our current late fee for non-payment is 5% for the first month and then 1% each month thereafter. This is lower than many other utilities which charge 10% and up to, in some cases, 25% for delinquent utility bills. However, this does have the drawback of if this were applied, this would be applied citywide. Another potential solution is a change in the shut-off fee for shut-offs. So currently, if the city were to move forward with a shut-off or, in this instance, we get past the shut-off date, we'd still apply a shut-off fee. However, rather than just applying it on a per-building basis, you could apply this on a per-unit basis. This would increase the delinquency amount essentially for the management company, making it more expensive for them to miss their shut-off date and hopefully encourage them to pay before that shut-off date. A third possible solution is to require three months' deposit for units that have failed to pay on time. The deposit can then be used by the city to pay for any delinquent utility bills. So for instance, if the management company fails to pay their bill on time, the city could utilize the deposit that's on hand to make the account whole. And then they can require that the deposit be made whole within 30 days of use. A failure to do so could also result in a possible forfeiture of the rental license. All of this would sort of stretch out some of the timeline for those tenants to be notified that there may be an issue with the future rental license of the facility that they live in. Staff is recommending that we require the three-month deposit for units that have failed to pay on time. One, we see this as a neutral policy to the current operators. So any current good operators, they would be woolly unaffected by this. They would continue paying their bills on time, and they wouldn't have any sort of negative consequences. This would require companies to post deposit after having failed to pay bills on time after X times. And this is something that I would want from the city commission. Is it after failing to pay by the shut-off date one time, we would require the deposit, maybe two times, maybe three times? So this is some feedback that I would want from the city commission if we were to move forward with this proposal. And then also, we would want to look at the adverse of that. If a company then was put into this policy and required to put deposit of three months' utility bills on file with the city, is there a period of time in which the city commission would look at, it's been, let's say, a year, it's been two years of good behavior, we can give the deposit back, and that landlord can then be just on the very regular policy for utility billing? With that said, I want to entertain any questions, discussion from the city commission, and potential direction.
Commissioner Bush?
Just for clarity, the charging the three months' deposit, would that be for individual residences, too, that also? So I guess I missed, so it wouldn't, like, if I don't pay my water bill or something like that, it's only for?
No, administratively, that would be very hard. We would still move forward with those shut-offs. And again, you know, understanding that you as the owner, you as the individual who is ultimately responsible for the utilities that you've used, the shut-off policy as it currently exists makes sense. It's only in those instances of some of the larger complexes where you have a management firm taking your rent dollars who ought to be paying your utilities, but they're not.
So I just missed how the city would determine, is it the 20 units? Or how is the city going to determine, like, who falls in that category?
We are proposing it be a larger amount rather than being, let's say, every one of them out there. And it's only because there is an issue with size. One of the issues that we had talked about internally is if the city were to move forward with shut-offs of a complex that big, you're talking about hundreds of individuals. And we really are unsure if the community even has the resources to be able to take care of those individuals. Are there adequate hotel rooms in the area or anything? What do those people do? That would obviously be a very large issue. And so we are advocating for more on the large-scale side.
Okay.
Commissioner, okay.
I, Manager DeSantis, I appreciate this presentation. As I read it, you know, before coming here, I sort of started not laughing, but I recognized pieces of this that relate to places I have been where, you know, ordinances or policies like this are in place, and they are deterrent. And that's because things like, you know, what you're describing happens. I appreciate that you're limiting the application of this particular policy if we adopt it to companies with very large, you know, apartments who have been delinquent. And I appreciate the fact that you clearly state that this is applicable not to everybody but those who have been delinquent. Right? Do I understand you clearly?
That's correct.
Okay, so I do think that because we have to hold ourselves accountable. You know, for me, this deals with the issue of accountability and responsibility. I clearly would not support anything that would be so, that would punish residents, you know, who are not necessarily, I don't want to use the word guilty, but I'm struggling here, who are not necessarily responsible for the lack of payment. You know, so I think that's very dangerous. But if the idea is to hold the companies, you know, who do business with us basically, you know, and who have accepted the rents of people and promised, you know, to make the place safe by paying for, you know, the utilities and then have reneged on that promise. If this helps to hold them accountable to the residents, but also to the city where they promised to be responsible, you know, I would say, yes, it's a good idea, you know. If, you know, for me, because I'm looking at this thinking, well, if your renters, you know, do not pay rent for one month or two months or three months or four months or six months, what do you do? You go to them and you say, hey, you don't do it, this is what I'm going to do. Okay, if they're going to hold their renters accountable, we ought to hold them accountable, too, because, you know, you know, it's economic challenges, right, you know? So I like your recommendation of the three-month deposit. People who rent apartments here or houses are compelled somehow, are required to make these deposits. And if they break things and destroy the place, oh, sorry, you lose your deposit or some percentage of it. Okay, so we use that particular structure. So I appreciate that, and I think that we need to talk about that. In terms of the number of years, we can discuss that. Two years, one year? I would suggest that we not do this, you know, and say, hey, you can only do it once. And then they come back the next year and do it again. So I do think that we need to think about that, how, you know, how many times. I also don't want to be too punitive by saying, oh, you've missed your payment this first time, therefore you're going to be punished. Okay, so I think sometimes people travel. If they're like me and I'm traveling, you know, they travel, they forget things. Things go missing in the mail for a couple of days. So, you know, we want to be compassionate or considerate. But at the same time, we want to hold people accountable. And that's where I'm going with this. Thank you.
Commissioner Chapman?
So, now, correct me if I'm wrong. You say if there's a late fee, it has to be for everybody. But if there's a deposit, we don't have to do it for everybody?
Fair enough, that's a very good point, Commissioner Chapman. You could look at a policy that instead assigns a separate late fee based on certain patterns. So there would be nothing, let's just say, a graduated late fee? That's always a possibility as well, too.
So for me, it just seems messy to say, I'm going to be the bank for this. I mean, be an escrow and move money and put money, make them put money back in. That just seems messy to me. Instead of saying, if they're late, make them pay a late fee, right? And even if it is 20%, then don't be late, right? I mean, if we can make it so, it just seems messy to me to be, to start doing this kind of thing where, instead of charging a late fee, because it seems to me if we can do a deposit for one group of, then we should be able to do a late fee for one group. And so that's my suggestion. I'm not for the deposit and starting to be a bank for apartment complexes.
Commissioner Bush?
That was along the lines of what I was trying to ask, too, because it felt like, like, how were, and how were we going to make that decision about, like, who falls into this category or whatnot? I was kind of going on, if this was like staff's recommendation, then there must be like a reason why this financial structure made more sense to staff. But I agree with Commissioner Chapman that it does seem like just increasing the late fees so that it's more standard with other utilities, is that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that just seems a little cleaner cut. But I do want to state that, you know, that this has happened twice is just absolutely, I mean, it's really unacceptable. I mean, we could put a lot of our citizens in a dire situation. So I'm grateful on some level that we have had this brought to our attention so that we can set a policy in place, but it's extremely concerning.
If I can to maybe answer both of your questions, too. Staff looked at a few different options here, obviously. And in consultation with the city attorney, he had also recommended this is something that he was doing with another municipality. And so this is something that he saw as worthwhile. But also, I know in conversations with management companies, they absolutely hate this. They absolutely hate to have capital going out the door that is not making a return. And so understanding that they hate that, I thought, well, then it makes sense as a good penalty.
So they, with, I'm curious as to what his thoughts were on, like, the legal ramifications of them not paying the bill. I mean, because they're collecting money. I assume that probably has to be escrowed or something, right? For the company, and then they have to give it to us. Or is it just a free-for-all? We collect the money and just pay it when we want to pay it?
Yeah, I could not say as to how things are operating within, let's say, the management company that we've been having problems with for the past six months.
It's just crazy. I mean, I would live, I can't believe that this happened.
Vice Mayor?
I think I don't agree with the idea of raising fees and, like, what we're discussing here because that could affect the average citizen that maybe misses a bill once. So I don't like that idea. But I think I do like the idea of holding an owner of an apartment complex with 20 or more units, having them have to do the escrow and cover that bill since it is a certain company that's been late twice.
And this can be a policy that is written in that this goes into effect once you have, the company has proven not to pay their bill.
It could be, yeah.
Yeah.
If I can, just to make sure that the city commission understands as well, too. It's, this company has gone past the shut-off date twice. This company has been late with payment every month for, I think, six or seven months now.
Yeah. It's my, sorry. It's my understanding, I mean, the recommendation is that the deposit is for units that have failed to pay on time. It doesn't say every unit that is that big. It's specific, it's very, very targeted. The units that have failed to pay on time. You do it several times. What holds you accountable then? What makes you pay? If you don't, if you're not worried that you're going to lose that money that you've deposited? Okay, the first time you get a warning, second time possibly a warning. You do it again, next time, you know? The option, of course, is to lose your renter's license. And I don't think, I'm not sure that I want to go for that. So this is, you know, what I think more reasonable option. I don't see it saying that it is for everybody who has rental property. It says for those people who have failed to pay on time. Those are the ones we are holding accountable.
Commissioner Wingard?
Yeah, I just wanted to jump in as, I think, the only person on the board who's just a renter in the community. I just kind of want to backtrack and just want to thank my fellow commissioners for centering the residents in this conversation. I think it's been really valuable. And I actually was reading the city code or charter recently, and there was a bit that I thought was a little apt. Section 4 under Article 1 says, "Provide for public peace, health, safety." The city shall provide for the public peace, health, and peace and health, and for the safety of persons of property within the city. I think it's really good, and I think it's a really good step that we're centering, considering residents who don't actually own property within the city necessarily in the conversation. I get a lot of criticism, sort of myself, as not a homeowner, for what are you doing on the city commission? You don't own property. And I think that's a separate conversation. I mean, amending the charter, that's a whole nother ballpark there. But I think it's important that people who rent in the city want to know that they're going to be protected, that they want, like, if they're going to live here, that they're going to be in a reliable place. And so I kind of like the deposit idea, especially hearing that, like, the larger rental companies are, might be irate about it. Again, this is a very rare situation. So it feels like we're correcting a policy that's worked for dozens and probably decades at this point. So I feel like we're tailoring it a bit to focusing on one company that, as residents have pointed out, have a history across the country of being abusive of their properties. So I'm all for, like, stricter measures on this.
Vice Mayor?
And I think that goes along with the fact that they would have received, you know, a notification, a late fee, another late fee. So they're still paying some fees, but then this would make it so that we'd have a little more control over not getting to that shut-off stage.
Correct, yes. And I'm happy to hear, it sounds like from the city commission's standpoint, there's an interest in tailoring some sort of solution here. And I don't want to be so hard on to one particular solution. As I said, staff's recommendation is the deposit. I could see where a graduated late fee rate or something would also work to try to deter. Obviously, what we're trying to deter is just bad management, making sure the city gets paid on time. So those are my own concerns coming out of this work session.
At my point, my thought is that so far, these individuals, this management company has been late, like, six times in a row, pretty much. We've sent out shut-off notices to the tenants who have no idea. We've sent out shut-off notices to the tenants who have no idea that this is coming. Um, and if we just, it doesn't sound like late fees affect them. That's not, that's not a deterrent for them, because even after they pay, they end up with another shut-off notice. Even after they've done something, they end up with another, they don't, it doesn't seem to be that big of a deal. And I would be, um, very much against adding or increasing late fees to everyone, because there are some people that fall behind, um, and it's hard for them to catch up if they have a late fee on top of it. Or if, you know, because that late fee, if you don't pay it the first time, it's added to the next one, and then it's a late fee, and then it's added to the next one, and it, it just becomes a snowball. Um, I'm more for, because this is very targeted towards a certain size of units, and it's not every apartment complex of this size is going to have to do this, it's every apartment complex management company that has not done well, has not been on time, and that's all we ask them to do, is be on time, just like we ask every resident, that this, these individuals or this, um, management company needs to just have a little more incentive to pay. And I think if we flip back a couple, you had a couple of questions up there, where it was, what, what would we want to add?
Their recommendation.
Yeah, yeah. So, you know, a neutral to good operators, nobody, they wouldn't be affected. Um, require companies to deposit, um, post-deposit after having failed to pay their bills after so many times, which we get to determine. And when you do so many times, you do so many times within so many months, right? And then once they are able, they can get that deposit back, just like you do with a security deposit on, on a, a home that you place, after so much time, they can have that back, as long as they haven't had a shut-off notice. And I think that that's more than reasonable, because that's more, that's pretty much like a, um, a lease agreement for any home or apartment that you rent.
I just wanna make, make it clear that my recommendation was not to up the fee for everybody. My recommendation was to do the exact same thing as this, except it be a higher, I mean, if, if we're sectioning that part off, cause I don't wanna be in the morning sun that Brian Chapman suggested. Because that's not what I said.
We're gonna put it out there, yeah. But I don't know, I mean, that would, I don't know if that would even deter them.
And I didn't realize, I mean.
Oh, it's been a lot. Commissioner Bush.
Um, yes, right, right with you, that was my point too. I thought that, yeah, so, I, I'm just worried that this is, we are increasing the city's administrative costs to institute this, to cater to this specific issue. And so I'm just concerned that it's, so even though we still will be collecting these late fees, they're not going to pay anymore for what's happening, they just have to pay upfront. And I guess you said that they, you know, that they might hate that, but it just feels like it's kind of a wash for them in terms of, but it'll increase our costs, I'm assuming to administrate this. I'm just wondering if there's a way, when you have a renter's license, if, like, if, if, so, sorry, so if a renter pays their own utilities, this wouldn't apply, but if there's a unit with a rental license, where the owner of the rental license pays the utility, is the account holder, could there be a higher late fee on that? I mean, it seems like, you know, that's a, a business. I mean, I, I understand, you know, landlords are people too and all that, but we've got, um, it, it just, you know, increase costs for the city, so I just don't, it, it, it would be a where do we draw the line thing, and I think that's what I'm struggling with too, just cause I don't wanna spend more of a city's time and resources to administrate something that, yeah.
You want something a bit more cut and dry, so it's like, we're not involved, we're not entangled in it, so.
Yeah, but we have code enforcement that go out and hang the tags on every one of those.
That's not it, it's the, it's the literal office time.
But, but, but regardless, even the late fee would necessitate somebody taking it and entering it and administering.
But if they're collecting more of a late fee, because we already have.
We're not saying late fee here, this is very specific as far, you know, maybe I'm reading this incorrectly. It says, you know, if you haven't paid, if you have failed to pay over a certain number of times, this is the repercussion, all right? Consequence, next time you have to put in this deposit. So you tell me.
But that's not income, that's not income, unless, the only way that it would.
It is used to make up for you're not paying, you know.
No, no, I understand that, but it's not any more than, it's not, it's not any more than we would get anyway, in the end of the year.
Then the question. Okay, Liz, please take turns.
Well, the question to ask him is, you know, if, while we're getting this deposit, you know, and the person has not paid, right? Does the late fee continue? That's the question that we should be asking him.
It does, yeah, it's, I'm sure it does continue, but that's still like the same punishment in the long run.
If I can clarify.
Punishment.
Can I, oh, yeah, can I let Commissioner Rowland speak next? I'm trying to go down the line, but you guys are jumping ahead.
Okay, so I wanted to address the new policy that could distribute the shut-off fee as per-unit cost. I think that would be in situations like they still did not pay despite getting the shut-off notice, a per-unit cost, which would be pretty effect, uh, effective deterrent from them getting to that point. It would probably prompt them to pay even sooner before it got to that point.
Hmm, that's certainly a possibility. So in that instance, let's just say it's, obviously, you got 50 different units and it's $50 as a shut-off fee, and you got $2,500 in new fees that would get tacked onto that.
Yeah, exactly, and that, that, in this case, you know, that I'm pretty sure for this particular complex, it's 100-plus units, so it would give them even more incentive not even to get to that point, rather than waiting until, then basically, because it's the same cost no matter what they've done, and they're still, you know, inclined to repeat the same scenario over and over again, I think the shut-off fee would prevent them from getting to that point.
Yeah.
I think that would be a pretty effective new policy to implement.
And, and I don't mean to set up a, uh, you know, a scenario of any kind of mutual exclusion as well too, so maybe the city commission, if they like a multitude of options, that's always available.
Right, because, you know, there's a shut-off fee for even, you know, residential people, I mean, there's a shut-off fee for that, and it's one shut-off fee for the company, but if you do it per unit, you know, I think that would give them even more incentive not to get to that point.
But isn't the shut-off fee after we shut off?
It would be on shut-off date, but I think, yeah, what Commissioner Rowland may be speaking to is just that looming overhead, knowing you've got 100 units at $50 a unit, you don't wanna pay the extra five grand in fees there or anything. So I think that's what you're referring to.
Yes, exactly.
And the deterrent is just knowing that that would come if you don't pay by Wednesday or what have you.
May I ask, do the 200 units have individual shut-off points, or is it just one shut-off point?
It depends on, it, it, no, it depends on how it's structured, but typically, in, in a lot of these cases, you'll have, let's say, uh, one meter, one shut-off point per building, and that building could have, you know, 10 units, 20 units, et cetera.
So it would be per unit, per apartment or town.
And the person goes and says, but you only did the work for one, once, why are you billing me for 10?
You are not. You're billing the management company.
Well, that would be the policy change, that's what.
Yeah, yeah, ultimately, it's just, it's a method of distributing a fee to try to deter bad behavior. So whether it's done on a percentage basis for the late bill, or it's done in this way as well, in this way, I would say you're likely with this particular apartment management company to get a higher fee if you do the change in the shut-off fee and you distribute it that way. At 50 per unit, you're gonna end up with probably, yeah, close to maybe $3,000, $5,000 in fees each and every time they hit that, versus, let's say, we took the 5% late fee, we add on another 5%, we double it, we make it 10%, that's still gonna be hundreds of dollars, so there's just a size and scale there.
Okay. Vice Mayor.
Well, one thing I think, I wanna make sure we understand, is when you're talking about a shut-off fee, you're also talking about a shut-off date. And in the case of these large apartment complexes, we're trying to get to the point where there's an awareness of a shut-off date without an actual shut-off occurring, correct?
Correct.
Good. Commissioner Chapman.
Um, I, I think, I still think, I mean, even to do a per-unit thing, I think that's fine. I think, I think, I just think it really muddies the water for us to be taking deposits, and then if they're not gonna, cause then we gotta have them refund the deposits, and then they're not gonna wanna do that, obviously, for three months. And so, I, I, I think, and I agree with Liz, she's talking about like, we're, we're gonna, we're just gonna have that money to pay the bill, and then maybe three times be able to have that money to pay the bill, after three times, we've not actually made any more money for what they've done, right? Because they're not paying anymore, I mean, 5% late fee or whatever, but if they're able to pay, like, per unit, 50 bucks, I mean, I think they're gonna start paying the bill on time. So I, I just don't, I, I really don't want us to be the bank and hold their money, I just don't, I, I don't think that's wise.
I, I think, yeah, I think that's not a bad idea there, just because, again, like, if the funds are held in escrow, even if they, if they fail, like, if this, a situation comes up, they resolve it, they pack, they pay it back into the escrow, um, we can't do anything with those funds, as far as I'm aware, like, they're just sitting there. So like, so the city isn't, like, if we have to put in extra man-hours, um, like, tagging doors or administrative fees or anything, we're not being recompensated from it, or recompens, compensated from it.
In those cases, we already have a door-tagging fee, and so there is a door-tagging fee that's already assessed as well too, so those sort of things are compensated already.
Commissioner Bush.
Per door?
Per door.
Can we do the door-tagging fee per unit? Same thing for the shut-off fee per unit?
Yeah, it would be per door is, is the way that it's currently done, so that's the, the smallest that we can currently do, that's, that's per unit.
What's the fee for that?
Uh, we would have to look that up.
Yeah, so if we do the fee per door, are we charging them per, per door right now?
Yeah. Can we please make sure we're speaking into our microphone?
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, so right now, if, if, if someone gets door-tagged, there is a, a door-tagging fee.
Right.
And that is assessed per door that is individually tagged, correct?
So even, so even with the deposit, I mean, companies charge service fee for things like that. So, yes, it's, you know, you, you know, my bank charges me, you know, service fee because it keeps telling me you need to go to paper banking, I have a fee, but before that, you know, it's like, each time they print one-page statement, here, three bucks or something like that for doing that, it's service fee, whether they brought, you know, they bring it to you or not. But there is service fee practically on everything these days. So if part of, you know, getting this deposit would include, you know, a service fee tagged to it, I think, you know, the thing is, all those, for me, all those recommendations are applicable, they're good, we just have to decide which one we want, and, you know, and then make sure that that's the one that we, that we implement. What we want is to deter these people or particular company from misbehaving, so to say.
Commissioner Chapman.
I didn't raise my hand.
You raised, you were gonna talk right before.
Oh, was I? Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, you're right.
I'm watching you guys.
I don't remember.
Okay. Commissioner Wingard.
Um, yeah, so a little bit of a change in topic, there was the mention, um, it was one of the slides, a failure to do so would result in a possible forfeiture of the rental license. What happens in that situation? Like, like, what, what does that play out, look like?
I'm glad you brought that up, because it's something I wanted to talk about with the city commission, and, and another reason why I favor this, and I probably didn't highlight it well enough. If the city, let's just say, put our conversation to the side, and if the city were to, in these instances, move forward and execute its current shut-off policy, in which you've got a certain management company that operates units here, renters are paying their bills, doing everything they thought was right, management company didn't pay the utility bill, and we move forward with shut-offs in that instance. Obviously, as a tenant, you can't live in a facility that has no running water. Fire department, building department would actually have to condemn, and all of those individuals would have to leave that facility until water services restored. Given that this management company is out of state, it's taken them quite a long time to pay well beyond the shut-off date, this could leave people displaced for a meaningful period of time, and with very little notice too, because as a tenant, I think you would initially get the door-tagged and think, well, this has gotta be a mistake, et cetera, that the management company's gotta come through, and then before you know it, within only a few days, you could be displaced and fallen. Obviously, I'm very happy that we have a city commission that is very supportive of, no, we don't want that to happen, let's figure something else out here. My goal with the recommendation for the three-month deposit is this, that company instead has the three-months deposit that's on hand, once they go past that shut-off date, we can go ahead, utilize that deposit to keep the water on, pay all of the back payments, and then we notify the management company, and we tell them that they have 30 days to replenish that amount of money. Another month goes by, and let's just say that the management company doesn't pay, we then select another month out of the deposit, we're able to keep the city whole in terms of its cash flow and everything, but then we would notify both the management company and the renters as well too, that that management company is now in violation of their rental license, and that a violation of that could be that they lose their rental license if they're not within compliance within a certain amount of time. Now the renter at least has a little bit more time to understand, okay, if the management company's not gonna have a rental license, I really can't stay here, uh, they'll start to make certain decisions, I think, and I think that those decisions would probably have an impact on the management company. For instance, if you had heard that your management company that you continue to pay rent to was not paying the bills that you were giving the money to pay, you might be a little bit reticent to pay your rent, and so now that becomes another issue for the management company, and probably something that catches their attention as well too. Uh, and again, if it gets to a worst-case scenario in this one, at least those renters have, in my mind, several months before you get to a period where they may have to be displaced, let's just say if the worst happens, that management company is very quietly going under and just failing to pay their bills all across the United States. It just gives those tenants a little bit more time to try to acclimate, figure out where they might be going, and, and figure out other plans to leave that apartment complex.
I don't, I, I just, I'd be very concerned about what that would look like for the city. I, I, I do see the element of protection for, for the renters, and I do appreciate that, um, and I think at this point, they're probably already aware that that's a concern. I just, um, again, just heard that several steps of like, the city does this, the city does this, the city does this, it just, it sounds like a lot of work, yeah. So do you think the issue is, is the issue with the company that they are not financially solvent, or is it just, uh, one hand doesn't know what the other hand's doing?
That's very hard to say. It really is hard to say. I, I, I couldn't answer that question truthfully, because I, I just don't know.
Okay.
Commissioner Chapman.
I remembered what I was gonna, so, so these, these, so this specific company, do, are we aware when the company is paying the bill opposed to when the tenants are paying the bill or no? Like, we, I can't imagine we would know, I would hope that we wouldn't know that all these people aren't, aren't the ones paying the bills and we're sticking tags on their doors and scaring them to death that they're.
We, I do not know what, because every company does it differently. It could be you move in here and renters always do on the first for every unit, or it could be managed per unit, it really just depends on the company, so it's hard to say. The other thing about this company is they utilize a third-party paying, uh, company, and so to be honest with you, I'm not entirely certain that this company knows when they're paying the bill.
Sure.
Okay.
But if they have a rental license, isn't that explained in the agreement with the city? Don't they get literature, you know, stating of everything that is available as far as utility providers?
Uh, as part of their rental.
Their, their licensure, I mean, if they're gonna get a rental license in the city, wouldn't they have all that information of when's everything's due?
I think chief Lob singer, is that distributed as part of their rental license information?
I'm asking for clarity, do you, uh, for commissioner?
Not necessarily, no. Um, they could, if, water shut-offs are, are tough to deal with even on the individual level.
Mm-hmm.
And when it hits this large level, it's almost unmanageable for us to, uh, to, and to even think about if the water's shut off, what it's going to do.
Yeah.
Because people are still going to live there.
Yeah, and that's pretty dangerous.
Because they don't have any other place to go, and then the house becomes unsanitary, and there's damage to the property, and we try to get in there right away, that's why they let the fire department know what water shut-offs are coming before it happens, so we can jump in, contact the owner, contact, uh, try to educate them, but do we do that on the huge complexes? No, some of these are 300, 400 units, some of these are 30, 40 buildings that we're currently talking about, so.
Commissioner Windgaard?
Yeah, in this specific situation, and this might be a conversation to have with our attorney also, um, if, it's a bit of a worst-case scenario and everything, but if some, like, if the company were to go belly-up or anything, um, finding out what kind of steps we could take, I suppose, to not have a mass exodus out of the complex or anything, um, I, I guess, kind of like, is there a way that the city could theoretically step in to, like, provide a transition, like, we could, like, provide the sale of the license while maintain, like, maintaining the complex or something? I, I, I'm not asking you to, like, have an, have an answer for me right now, but it's just kind of like, again, we're talking about some scary stuff here, it sounds like, so it's just having an idea of, like, what that would look like, I feel like we're starting to cut more to our fear of what could happen, so, um, just kind of like, I, I would, again, like, as you've talked about, there could be, like, it's, could be a couple hundred people and everything of, like, if the company were to suddenly just abandon their license or something, again, worst-case scenario, I don't see that happening, but what would, what kind of recourse would we have as a city to be able to do something for us? That's kind of a question probably for a later time, or just...
Like emergency management.
Emergency management, yeah, in that situation, um, and that, I don't think that's really the discussion we're having here right now, but it is a concern that I have, so.
Commissioner Bush?
Oh, I didn't have, I don't, I don't think so.
Yes, you did, but that's okay, we're just, we're having an off Monday. Commissioner Ake?
Um, here is my concern, I, you know, as I stated earlier, I, you know, I would like us to avoid a situation, and I'm glad that you said that, where we have, you know, displaced persons, that's not, you know, that's not something we want, um, and you know what it feels like, so, we don't want to have, you know, people who are displaced, who are alienated from their place of safety, I do think that, given the condition, um, you know, it, it doesn't seem to me as if the process that you've suggested, in which case, before, you know, somebody who has been in violation several times is now required, you know, to put down some money before you continue business, that, you know, that is egregious. Universities do that, okay? Um, a lot of organizations do that, you haven't been acting in good faith, or maybe, you know, ignoring people, you, the city has to pay the utility, all these, you know, the, the bills for these utilities, so if the money is not there, who is going to pay it? You're going to go to residents now and start taxing them so that you can cover the bill of some, you know, uh, company that is in violation of its contract with us, okay, so, and I think that's where that money that is in escrow, which is why, you know, mortgages even ask you for escrow, right? So you have escrow just in case, we need to pay, they need to pay additionally towards your taxes or your insurance, they get from it, take that, you know, pay, cover it, and ask you, make this whole, that's what I'm hearing from you. I think that we need to think responsibly, and we need to think about the fiscal survival of the city, um, I don't, I'm not comfortable with, you know, just simply not doing anything about this where somebody for six months hasn't paid, and now we have a huge bill sitting somewhere that needs to be covered, where is the money going to come from? If this particular money deposit that they have made is there, we use it to take care of all of that, and hope that they will not go and violate, you know, the, the contracts again, but I think that we do need to do something, so, you know, that's where I am with this, because the city, the city's own fiscal safety is also important, you know? We make a promise to our residents that this is a safe place for them, and as a matter of fact, when the residents are upset, who do you think they call? They're going to call you and report all of these things, no, seriously, right? They call the city, you're not doing this, you're not doing this, my, people in my neighborhood complain about things that have happened where they said to me, okay, we don't know who to call, or, then I say, call the city, because I don't know who else, call the city, this is your city, so, on the one hand, we have to attend to, yes, the rights of the companies, they do have rights, I recognize that, but the residents also, the renters also do have rights, you know, in this case, that right is, or our promise to them is that we are going to protect them, we advocate for them, but the city also has to make sure that it is, you know, okay, that it's not busy taking care of, you know, the responsibilities of organizations who are not worried about, you know, the security and the safety or the rights of their renters, we need to hold them accountable, that's where I am.
Okay, Commissioner Bush?
So, escrow is something that...
Please speak into your microphone.
Escrow is something that would be applied in, in other situations like mortgages, Commissioner Ake said, to everybody across the board, if they've done something wrong or not, so I don't necessarily think that applies in this case, I can see how it would be important to keep the city fiscal, fiscally solvent, to collect a deposit when there's late fees, and I'm sure there, we would have a, an ordinance change to, to review, but something that would be after X amount of times, probably two times, if you're, then you would have to pay in a deposit, I can see that might be necessary to, um, to protect the renters and to keep the city fiscally solvent, and since it probably, if it ever happens, it may just be this one instance, so hopefully it's not a whole lot of work, but I do think there needs to be something done, too, that makes it even more of a incentive, because if they're not worried about, I, I mean, if they're, if they're not worried about it yet, I just don't see how not paying more money is going to be that much of an incentive, so I would like to look at, my, my recommendation would be to, yes, adopt that, but then I do think we also need to look at some other fee increase when somebody gets to this point, and I, especially in regards to maybe properties of over 20 people, because, of course, we, you know, we, if you're hiding a bunch of door tags, you obviously know that there's something up, there's something going on, so, either be it the per-door tag fee, I feel like, I don't know what that is, I mean, is it $5? I mean, should it be, I, again, I, I know you don't, we don't know, but if...
He hasn't.
That seems like, what's that?
He hasn't.
It is $15 per door tag.
Okay, so, yeah, so if, if it was, you know, 50, but you got one for free, or something like that, so that your individual resident, you know, you get one get-out-of-jail-free card, but if it was 50 per tag or something like that, I, I just, maybe that would be an incentive, I'm, I'm talking about doing both, that would be, that would be the where I would lean.
Okay, so can you clarify what you are stating?
Okay, so I would clarify, I would, to, to adopt two different elements of these policies, one would be to, yes, to protect the residents, to keep the city fiscally solvent, have a after-two-times, we have to collect a deposit.
Okay, after two times in what time period?
A year.
At the shut-off level?
Um, no, late fee, I think late fee, after two months, I, I, you know, we, this could be something we could discuss, I mean, whatever the city thinks makes, makes sense, but like, maybe after two months, or two times in a year, um...
I was thinking maybe like, two times within a six-month period.
Or a six-month period, sure, yeah, yeah.
That it would go in, and then if we did zero, um, giving, you've gotten no issues for 18 months, we give you your deposit back.
I mean, I guess, but is there, yeah...
Because 18 months is over a year.
Okay, okay, and, but then the second part of that would be a penalty assessment, um, and perhaps at the door-tag level.
Okay.
Um, and, and that everybody gets one free get-out-of-jail-free card, so an individual consumer would not be penalized, they would, they, you know...
No more than the 15.
No more than the 15, but, um, but larger complexes where you have multiple units, and so you are a, a renter who, you are a landlord who is paying the rent on behalf, or paying the utilities on behalf of their renters, then that would start accruing, and that would be an incentive, I think, if we, I mean, I don't know, I, I don't know how much we could raise the rate to, but, I mean, because obviously $15 wasn't, $15 per door-tag wasn't an incentive enough.
Commissioner One?
So, for the apartment complex, would, did they just get one single $15 door tag?
No, they got...
No, they get tagged every single unit that they have within any building that they own.
Okay, okay, because that was my main question, if they only have one...
Uh, in this case, it's the management company.
Okay.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, yes.
What if there was a caveat, too, though, like, you get charged this door fee unless you can come to us with reasonable proof of, something like that?
Here we go.
Hardship.
For a management company?
Exactly, that's my point.
Commissioner Chapman?
Yes, um, I recommend the same thing I've been recommending, because now it's even getting more complicated, I think the easier it is for, I, I'm just a very simple person, and, and the more moving parts, I mean, and we're, we're doing, we've never had this issue before, and we're doing, we're making this super-complex thing for one company that may never do that again, who knows, and so, I mean, I understand, li, listen, charge them 100% late fee, if you've gotten to the point where you're getting two shut-off notices, charge them whatever, I mean, 50%, uh, you know, but to, to just make it super-comlicated, it just seems too complex for an issue that we're just don't deal with often, or ever, maybe besides these two times with one company.
Commissioner Ake?
Okay, I'm going to just try and delineate or write down what, what, what I've, sort of, rattle out what I, what I've heard, because I'm getting completely disoriented right now, so I'm being honest, right? So, we're talking about this deposit, okay? So, we do a deposit, you already do door tag, right?
Correct.
So, regardless of, of whether, you know, of what we do with a deposit, you will continue to do the door tag, am I clear on that?
Correct.
You already have late fee imposed, regardless of the deposit, you will continue to do the late fee, am I correct on that?
Correct.
So, what I'm hearing, at least for myself, is that the deposit is just simply an additional mechanism to these pieces that already exist, that seem not to be effective, or at least for this particular entity, am I correct?
That's correct.
Okay, I don't see what the complication is, what is the problem? It is a specific entity, particular, it's very, very specific, all the other entities, if they're in violation, you, they get the door tag, they get the late fee, they get the warning, but if for some reason they haven't paid over a certain period of time, this is what we require, we ask them to do now, because they have been in violation over a certain number of times, is that what I'm hearing from you? That's what you're asking?
That's correct.
Okay, that's it. I just want to make sure.
But I think we should also add the new policy of the shut-off fee per unit, because right now I don't think we have that in effect, correct?
That's correct.
I think we should institute that.
But you're punishing the, the unit companies?
No, it's not the unit that would be punished, it would be a management company that...
Yeah, management company, not...
So you're not punishing the individuals?
We're not, no, no, not at all, ever.
Okay, all right, I'm, okay.
Commissioner Windgaard?
I think, um, kind of, kind of hearing, I, I think the increased fees, um, whatever form that take, doing like incremental or increased fee, um, for successive shut-off notices would be good, or per unit, um, I, I'm good with either one of those, um, hearing, again, we've gone over the deposit a lot tonight, I, I think the deposit would make sense, um, in addition, I, I, I think it would be a combination of factors, and I, I think that, because I think of if we're just ghosted by a company, like, again, this company specifically, if we're, we're, they're talking with us now, they're active, and they're responding, and like, want to make things right, it's still, what if we just don't hear from them for however successive long and everything, without, uh, having that deposit on hand would help our water treatment facility continue to run, keep the lights on and everything in the meantime, until we can apply those fees, um, so I, I, I think it's, I would go with both there, and I think the timetable that, um, Mayor Hirschbacher, um, laid out is, I think that's reasonable, I don't have, I'm, I would defer to maybe even code enforcement on what they think a good timetable would be, but that's not my line of work there, so.
Vice Mayor?
I think, to summarize, what I think we're hearing is, if there, if they would accrue two shut-off notices within six months, then they would be required to put down this deposit, and in addition, there would be an increase with a per-unit tag fee that's increased above the 15, maybe up to $50, and then the time span would be either 18 months or two years.
I'd go for two years.
Okay. Does that sound reasonable? Because if we give them one thing, like the shut-off fees, um, the tag fee being much higher, that would be added to their bill, we give them that, hey, we're, we're not playing anymore, and then if they don't apply with that, comply with that, then we, we say that they have to put the, the money down, so we give them two levels.
I just have a question, this certain company that you're talking about, have we received any payment from them?
Yeah, yeah, they, they have, they do pay, they pay it oftentimes late, but they eventually do pay.
Okay.
Okay, I, do you have direction now?
I think I've got direction. Very much for a lively conversation this evening. Clear as mud, right?
Right, very lively. All right, um, at this time, we do not have a closed session, and I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
I move.
I'll stick with him.
Okay, all those in favor say yes, yes, all those opposed, no, we are adjourned at 8:15.
Thank you.